And click on that. Whoop. Click on that, you should be able to at least see and hear us. If you need any help with any of that, you can call Ms. Duffy's technical assistance hotline, I note that in the courtroom tonight up here for the ZBA Chairman Forster, Vice Chair Burrow, Mr. Meyer, and Ms. Huss. Zoning Officer Duffy is present, as is Alternative Energy Coordinator Hinkle. Assistance. Hmm? Whoop. Excuse us, the meeting just closed by on Zoom. Did I hit some? I hope everybody could continue to hear me. We thought we had a technical glitch. Forgot where it was. Assistant State Attorney Sasser appears on Zoom. Ms. Kennedy for the petitioners here in the courtroom is our Jonathan from Lee County IT, Court Reporter, and myself. I see up in the audience six interested parties personally appearing. On Zoom, I see one other interested party making the total attendance at tonight's meeting, 18. All right, when we left off on Monday, we'd finished evidence, we'd finished taking public comment, and the time has arrived for us to begin zoning Board of Appeals fact finding and recommendations before I open the floor. Jonathan, meetings being livestreamed, just got it, is that okay? Okay. All right, so the floor is open for motions, and whoever chooses to make one. Mr. Meyer?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals herein after the ZBA or zoning Board finds that on February 17th, 2023, Maples Road Solar One LLC herein after Maples Road or petitioner applicant or developer an Illinois entity which is wholly owned by New Leaf Energy, Inc., a one-year-old company based in Massachusetts, a renewable energy developer recently spun out of Borgo Solar Systems, Inc., filed a petition accompanied by supporting material in a bound eight-and-a-half-by-eleven form and an eight-page set of 24-inch-by-36-inch schematics herein after the supplement or supplemental material which was later amended during its witnesses' testimony with the Lee County Illinois Zoning and Planning Administration Office, which is numbered 23-P-1605, requesting a special use permit for a 5-megawatt AC solar energy systems herein after the project solar farm or development on a rounded-off 35 acres herein after the project site, the development area or the leasehold area inside a larger plus-or-minus 299-acre parcel, property index number P-I-N, number 07-02-36-400-008 herein after the project parcel owned by Michael and Susan Pratt and zoned Ag One all within Dixon Township located approximately 1,600 feet east and then proceeding north of the intersection of Maples and Stony Point Roads.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member wish to address this? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. That motion is adopted. Next.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA finds that the following submissions of the initial petitioner, the proper notice of the filing of the petition and the impending May 4th, 2023 ZBA hearing was published in the Dixon Telegraph on April 14th, 2023. And furthermore, United States Postal Service certified mailing of the same notice were sent to real estate property owners whose properties would be adjacent to the proposed development's boundaries and the Lee County Zoning and Planning Administrator, Ms. D. Duffy supplemented the above notices by physically posting the same on April 18th, 2023, where the proposed development would be located and by way of an agenda including the Agenda Center of the Lee County website on April 27th, 2023, and tacked the same agenda on the county board's chairman's bulletin board in the old Lee County courthouse also on April 27th, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Ms. Huss?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the of the motion so ably read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted as well. Let me get that in red so I'm alerted to it. Save it. And next.
Mr. Facilitator, I move that on point three, the Lee County's ZBA finds that the hearing was initially announced by Chairman Bruce Forster on the evening of Thursday, May 4th, 2023, at 7:05 PM in the former courtroom on the third floor of the old Lee County courthouse. And under authority provided by its own rules prior to actually initiating the hearing, the ZBA engaged the services of Tim Slaven, a retired circuit court judge, as the facilitator for the proceedings.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion just read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted. Okey-dokey.
Number four, Your Honor. My motion reads, the Lee County's ZBA finds that the first portion of the public hearing regarding the petition for special use permit was for your Lee County's ZBA to accept testimony, hear arguments, and receive public comments, and that the first stage of the portion began on May 4th, 2023, and concluded on May 8th, 2023, after approximately four and a quarter hours of hearing time.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, the motion is adopted, and onward and upward we go.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA finds that throughout the hearing process no longer were there any mandated COVID-19 safety measures in place for public gatherings such as the ZBA hearing, but through the auspices of the Lee County IT Department and the Lee County Zoning Officer, Ms. D. Duffy, interested parties were given the opportunity to remotely and virtually participate in the process by video or teleconferencing on the Zoom platform through the use of computers, cell phone, or similar devices at the allocation of their choosing. And furthermore, interested parties could remotely view and listen to the proceedings in near real time or later in the recorded mode on YouTube, on a YouTube feed, also courtesy of the Lee County IT Department and Ms. D. Duffy. And lastly, the entirety of the proceedings were taken down by a certified shorthand reporter and subsequently transcribed. Those transcripts of all testimony, arguments, and public comments and ZBA debate were and continue to be available on the zoning and planning webpages within the Lee County website.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Ms. Huss?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, votes by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted as well. All right.
Mr. Facilitator, on number six, I move that Lee County's ZBA finds that at any given time, the most interested parties that appeared either in person or on Zoom was 11.
Um, would you take a friendly suggestion? It's your motion, but instead of 11, I don't know where that came from, it was 24?
On Zoom or?
Both.
Okay. So that's total.
Only if you accept it, I'm just telling you, that's my count.
I can accept them.
All right. Do I hear a second then to that?
Second.
Okay. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read and corrected by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. All right. Over that hump. Yes, next.
Number seven, my motion reads, Your Honor, the Lee County's ZBA finds that over the course of the first stage, everyone, the petitioner and interested parties, were given a complete and fair opportunity to be heard. Each was given the chance to present evidence, including witnesses and exhibits, cross-examine the witnesses of others, and to present a closing argument, statement, or a public comment, either orally or in writing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as just read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted. Okay. Cubs fans, we can keep going.
Your Honor, I move that we, the members of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, find that we heard or read all of the evidence produced and examined each of the exhibits.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, hearing none, but the motion is adopted. All right.
Judge, on point nine, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that three people took the witness stand, were placed under oath or affirmation, and testified. Those witnesses, in order of their appearance, with a very brief summary of what they had to say, were as follows. Ms. D. Duffy, Lee County Zoning and Planning Administrator, laid the foundation for the admission of her exhibits, which include the various notice processes for the for the instant ZBA hearing and the assorted documents accepted and kept within her office. Mr. Tom Ryan appeared on behalf of the petitioner. He is a New Leaf Incorporated project developer experienced in community solar projects who is leading the Maples Road Initiative. He outlined the corporate hierarchy of the involved entities and sketched out New Leaf's solar energy development experience, clarified that Maples Road is, is of, yeah, is of such a project, given the overall.
You missed a sentence. You missed a line.
Let's see what started. Is clarified, is intended, let's see, where did I finish?
Yep. You were right.
Clarified that Maples Road is intended as a subscriber model, that's right, okay, is intended as a subscriber model community, solar SES, outlined the essence and process of such a project, gave the overview of the proposed SES, an explanation of the physical footprint, the general nature of the equipment to be installed, and the interconnection with the COMEd grid distribution line, noted the community meeting was held, and touted the local benefits of the proposed development. Between his direct testimony and extensive cross-examination, he went on to explain the various ways in which the proposed project have met or would meet the requirements of Lee County ordinances, including, on behalf of the company, committing to being bound by all representations made in its supplement and statements he made under oath during the ZBA hearing. On a subsequent evening, he supplemented his testimony with a clarification how and when the developer would locate any existing drainage tile within the project site, retracted the previous intent to include battery energy storage as a component of the proposed SES, fleshed out more details on such matters as setting racking supports, the point of interconnection, fencing gates, an enhanced landscape plan, access road construction, tile survey, lighting, aviation issues, solid waste, and screening. Ms. Alice Hinkle, Lee County Alternative Energy Coordinator, who took the witness stand to explain her drafting of the operative Lee County Ordinance Number 11-22-008 and her own understanding of the intent and meaning of its screening provisions. There were no other witnesses.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Any discussion, any thing you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
Uh, no, sir.
Any other board member want to address it? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption is, vote will be by voice. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That one is adopted. Yes, lady and gentlemen.
Your Honor, on point nine alpha, my motion reads, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the following exhibits were admitted into evidence by the facilitator and considered by the board. Petitioners exhibits. Petitioner A, an updated but smaller 17-inch-by-11-inch landscape plan schematic. Petitioner number B, an overall parcel exhibit schematic. Petitioner number C, an updated but smaller 17-inch-by-11-inch layout and materials plan. Zoning officers exhibits. Zoning officer number one, a copy of the file stamped petition. Zoning officer number two, a copy of this community meeting notice sent by regular first-class mail to the Lee County Board, Lee County, Lee's zoning administrator. That should be Lee County zoning.
I got, I caught that.
The Dixon Township Board and all the persons who own real estate within a minimum of 1,000 feet of the proposed project's boundary. Zoning officer number three, notices sent by certified mail to the affected property owners adjacent to the proposed development. Zoning officer number three alpha, copies of the certified mail return receipts for the mailings referenced in ZO exhibit number three above. Zoning officer number four, a copy of the Dixon Telegraph publication of the public notice of the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing regarding the Maples Road Solar One LLC's petition for special use permits to be held in the Judge James E. Bale's courtroom located within the old Lee County courthouse beginning on May 4th, 2023. Zoning officer number four A, a copy of the certificate of publication from the Dixon Telegraph confirming the publication of the zoning officer exhibit number four above in its newspaper on April 14th, 2023. Zoning officer number five, copies of the notice sent to the District Three County Board members, Lee County Health Department, Lee County Engineer, and Highway Supervisor, Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District Office, Dixon Township Supervisor, and the Dixon Township Highway Commissioner. Zoning officer number six, a copy of the notice that was posted at the site of the proposed project on April 18th, and a copy of the zoning hearing agenda noticing, the agenda noticing the petition of the ZBA hearing that was posted on the bulletin board on the third floor of the old Lee County courthouse and in the Agenda Center of the Lee County website on April 27th. Zoning officer number seven, a copy of the petitioner's supplemental material, including site plan maps. Zoning officer number eight, a copy of the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District's LCSWCD, March 30th, 2023, Natural Resources Information Report for the ground upon which the proposed development would lay. Zoning officer number nine, a copy of an email from the Lee County GIS Department informing that no part of the proposed project falls within one and a half miles of the boundary of a municipality. Zoning officer number nine A, a copy of the email from the Lee County Health Department indicating no objection to the proposed projects. And zoning officer number 10, a copy of the Lee County Ordinance Number 11-22-008. That's my.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
You're out of, you're out of words now, Ryan. Any other board member want to address it? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so lengthily and well-read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. And onward and upward.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the following people availed themselves of the opportunity to make closing statements or public comments with a brief synopsis of what they had to say. Ms. Courtney Kennedy, who, using the pertinent Lee County ordinance as a guide, urged the reasons the ZBA should recommend the Lee County, recommend to the Lee County Board to approve the instant petition for a special use permit. Mr. Doug Gardner, a contiguous resident to the southwest of the proposed project site, voiced his opposition to the petition for a special use, voicing his concerns that the asphalt drive into his property would become an even more regular turnaround for vehicles on Maple Road, that the resultant increased traffic on Maple Road, Maple Road would cause damage, and he would be subjected to more intrusions because of the planned temporary lay-down yard. Is not within the fenced-in portion of the project site, that there would be increased security risks, that the development equipment would need updating, and that there is more suitable ground in the general area on which to site this proposed development. Ms. Linda Murray, a nearby resident, announced she is against change, would urge that the development be prohibited from incorporating any equipment parts from China, that the proposed project has unknown side effects, and the whole matter of being driven by greed. Ms. Leslie Barran, a nearby resident, opinion that the proposed project is not compatible with a residential area and that there are damage issues.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss, about the motion?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so ably read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted as well. Okay. Lady and gentlemen.
On the next point, number 11, I move that Lee County's ZBA finds that it was revealed through the testimony of its agent that the developer plans to develop the project, but if approved, would then market it to a separate entity that would construct, operate, and maintain it, and the proposed community solar project allows subscribed COMEd customers to save 5% to 10% on their electric bills, and preference for available subscriptions is given to those COMEd customers who or which are close to the project then, are our local citizens, but that under Illinois statute, no entity or person can subscribe to more than one community solar, solar project.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, and I should have added all along, and as displayed here in the courtroom on the screen behind me and on Zoom on share screen. Adoption of the motion is, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. And we can go on.
My motion reads, the Lee County's ZBA finds that according to the developer's witness, the minimum useful life of the Tier One PV panels to be used is 25 years, and the maximum is 50 years, partially supported by the terms of the lease, which runs for 20 years with four subsequent five-year extensions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer, displayed here in the courtroom and on Zoom. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. And hearing none, the motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA finds that through both its supplemental material and the testimony of its agent, that the generation components of each SES would be 12,672 photovoltaic bifacial panels coated with an anti-reflective, reflective AR substance and measuring about eight feet long, four feet wide, and one inch, one inch thick, set on a north-south single-axis tracking array system with a maximum tilt of 52 degrees and a height of not more than 10 feet above the ground surface when in full-tilt mode, and mounted on support pilings, preferably pile-driven and with no concrete base or possibly hydraulically screwed into the ground to 15 feet deep, connected to each other by underground electrical connection, electrical collection lines, which electrical collection lines would be routed to two sets of combined inverter and transformer on common concrete pads and then would be fed at a point of interconnection to COMEd's existing overhead transmission line running in an east-west direction across the development area, which feed would be the only SES system equipment and structures to exceed 20 feet in height when ground-mounted and would require between three to five utility height poles spaced 25 feet apart, and communication components, which would be digital transmission lines fed into a data acquisition system, DAS, which will be used remotely to remotely monitor and manage the SES.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Ms. Huss?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well-read by Ms. Huss, displayed on the screen behind me in the courtroom and on Zoom. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. And we can keep going.
Mr. Chair, on point 14, I move Lee County's ZBA finds that through both its supplemental material and the testimony of its agent, there would be a newly constructed gravel-access road serving the proposed development site of about 1,550 feet due west from the entrance off Maples Road with apparently a short 50-foot bump out at approximately 1,300 feet, then curving north, due north, for approximately 750 feet, containing a 20-foot gate after about 150 feet, then curving back due east for about 450 feet, ending in a T consisting of short north and south prongs, which would be constructed by digging out 12 inches of topsoil, 20 feet wide, and filling it to grade level with four inches of smooth gravel, and on top becoming, on top of a bottom layer of eight inches of rough gravel.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. And I'm just going to say this one more time, then unless I say it otherwise, the motions will be displayed behind me and on Zoom. The motion is displayed behind me and on Zoom. Adoption of the motion requires vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Okay.
Your Honor, number 15, my motion reads, the Lee County's ZBA finds that as noted above, the petition for a special use permit for the proposed project was filed with the Lee County Zoning Office on February 17th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Hearing none, seeing none, obviously, Mr. Meyer, do you have anything you want to say about your motion?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That one's adopted as well. That one's adopted as well.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that about three months prior to that time, on November 22, 2022, the Lee County Board Chairman signed into law the newest SES ordinance passed by the county board, Number 11-22-008, which would then be the provision specifically applicable to the petition at issue, which has been codified.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Ms. Huss read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Is there any banks used to say, let's play more?
Mr. Chair, on number 17, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that also in place at the time the petition was filed were certain provisions of the Lee County Ordinance, Performance Standards, Section 10-15-1, etc., SEQ, and Special Exceptions Variations and Nonconforming Uses, Section 10-2B-1, et cetera, which unless supplemented by the new SES ordinance would also be applicable to the ZBA hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. By the way, I'm not a big Cubs fan, but I do know that Ernie didn't just say, we'll play some more. He said, let's play two today. Next.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that as required by the Section 10-15-20 EI and EII of the operable ordinance, the petition did not contain a copy of the AMA as recited in the ordinance, but that the requirement is in conflict with S, with Section 10-15-2E, 20E.12, which requires entering into an AMA prior to construction, and the petitioner did commit to entering into an AMA prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted as well. We'd like to take a next swat.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that as required by the Section 10-15-20 EII of the operable ordinance, despite producing a grading and erosion control plan within its site use permit site, the petition did not show that the surface or subsurface drainage of the farmland on which the proposed development would lay, would not be impacted as a result of the construction, maintenance, or deconstruction of the proposed SES, staging areas, construction access lanes or driveways, installation of underground wiring, or cabling, or other associated construction, maintenance, or deconstruction activities. But the petitioner's witness did testify that presently the proposed access roads effects on the project parcel's drainage was being studied, but twice asserted in addition to it being referenced in its supplement, that there was in the LCSWCD's Natural Resources Information Report, a memo opinioning that implementing the project would decrease the CN curve number, a hydraulic parameter used to describe the storm water runoff potential for the drainage area, but there is no such memo or conclusion in that document, and accordingly did not produce a comprehensive drainage plan developed in cooperation with the property owners and impacted drainage districts where the SES project will be constructed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Any thing you want to say about your motion, Ms. Huss?
No.
Any other, excuse me, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question, excuse me, Ms. Huss, may I ask if you would accept a very minor, nothing substantive, in the third line, you read site because that's what it says. I wondered when I read it, that's this, and it's called a site use permit set. Just the wrong word got typed. If that's all right with you?
Yes.
With that, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion carries.
Moving on then to number 20. I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the current iteration of the Lee County Ordinance requires that Illinois licensed professional engineers certify the proposed foundation is within accepted professional standards under the existing conditions, which is then reviewed by a county-appointed engineer, and the petitioner did not produce such a certification during the ZBA hearings, but the ordinance is silent as to when the certification and review is to occur. And the petitioner's witness represented in his testimony that while not yet done, a qualified engineer was certified that the, certified that the foundation and design of the solar panels was within accepted standards before a building permit was issued.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Forge forward, as they say.
Your Honor, number 21, my motion reads, Section 10-15-20D.2.
But, and I'm not, excuse me for interrupting, Mr. Meyer. I put the ordinance section in there for everybody's ease of looking it up, but you don't have to, from, I don't care if you do want to read it, but you don't have to.
My motion then reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner represented in its supplement and the testimony it produced that would adhere to the applicable industry standards, codes, and best practices, including the International Building Code and the National Electric Code, local, state, federal rules, regulations, and laws pertaining to electricity generation and transmission, that all planned pieces of equipment would be listed by underwriters' laboratories. That's my motion.
Second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that in the testimony it produced, the petitioner stated that there would be both buried communication and electrical transmission collection lines running between panels, and the consolidation collection lines from the beginning point of interconnection to the utility-owned electrical transmission wires would be above ground.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Ms. Huss read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay, that's adopted, and onward we go.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Lee County ZBA finds that based on the representations made in its supplementary material and during the testimony of its agent, the developer indicated that no ground-mounted system, equipment, or structure, except for transmission lines, utility poles, or any poles or piece of equipment connecting a ground-mounted piece of equipment to an electric transmission line within the proposed development would exceed 20 feet in height.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got it. Any other, you want to comment on your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That one is adopted as well. Next.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner represented in its supplement and through the testimony they produced, that the leasehold area would be enclosed by a tightly woven galvanized chain-link fence, seven feet in height, with one 20-foot-wide entrance gate located just about 150 feet after the access road makes its northerly turn, and three 4-foot-wide pedestrian gates located, one on the north side of the perimeter fence, and one on the west side of the perimeter fence, and one on the south side of the perimeter fence, which would not be topped by barbed wire, and to which would be a fixed signage in accordance with the National Electric, Electrical Safety Code, American National Standards Institute, and the Occupational Safety and Health Administration standards and regulations, including a 24-hour emergency contact number, and the services of an independent contractor would be engaged to maintain the fence to prevent growth of woody vegetation and noxious weeds along and within it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Meyer read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that between its supplemental material and testimony, the developer did adequately show that it would comply with all Lee County ordinance equipment setbacks for a ground-mounting SES as follows: From the center line of Maple Road, which lays to the east, 1,590 feet more than the minimum 75 feet, and from the property line to the north, 1,014 feet more than the minimally required 15 feet, and to the west, 1,569 feet more than the minimally required 15 feet, and to the south, 2,640 feet more than the minimally required 15 feet, and to the east, 64 feet more than the minimally required 15 feet, and from the foundation of an adjacent nonparticipating primary dwelling, 343 feet more than the minimally required 400 feet, and from an inverter transformer or storage equipment to a dwelling, 814 feet more than the minimally required 500 feet, and there is a planted subdivision in the vicinity, but the nearest portion thereof is not within the 400 feet of the proposed development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about the motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Ms. Huss read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Yes.
Mr. Chair, on point 26, I move Lee County ZBA also finds that the developer adequately showed that all portions of the fencing around the proposed development area would be in compliance with the fencing subsection of the ordinance setback section.
Second.
Second, okay. Excuse me. Anything you want to say about your motion, Ms. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the ball's in your court, back in your court.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has indicated through both its supplemental material and its testimony of witness, that the proposed development will provide Knox boxes containing keys to provide access to emergency responders.
Second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that Maple Roads' witness testified that no security cameras are planned within the proposed development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that Maple's Roads' witness testified that no security cameras are planned within the proposed development. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion carries. How about it?
Mr. Chair, on point 29, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that in its supplement and through the testimony of its agent, the petitioner has indicated that motion-detecting security lighting is planned at the proposed SES development for each transformer, and would be full cutoff fixtures.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted. How about it?
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that in its supplemental material and through the testimony produced, the petitioner promised that although it did not underwrite a noise study, the development claimed it would, once operational, meet the Illinois Pollution Control Board noise standards in that there would be no noise emitting beyond the project parcel's boundaries in excess of 50 decibels, based on the witness's statement, the sound from the transformers and inverters would be equivalent to the noise of a refrigerator, and past studies done by the developer and peer-reviewed studies done by other entities, but acknowledged that during construction, the noise being emitted beyond the project parcel may exceed the relevant IPCB standards from trucks and rack-and-pile support setting, but alleged that the IPCB standards are accepted for construction activities.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that the developer did not produce any evidence of an analysis of potential glare specifically from the proposed project, but its witness indicated that there is no glare, so there was nothing affected, and committed to placing all solar collectors in a manner so as to avoid concentrated solar glare projecting onto nearby structure, roadways, or other areas accessible to the public.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so ably read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires the vote by, a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Okay.
Mr. Chair, on point 32, according to the Lee County ZBA, finds that the petitioner did carry its burden under Lee County ordinance of proving that any glare produced does not have an adverse effect on neighboring or adjacent uses, either through sighting or mitigation, and so that the Lee County ZBA concludes there would not be glare produced from the development, which would have a significant adverse impact on neighboring or adjacent uses.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow? I'm sorry, I'm doing two things at once. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
The only point I would bring up is that the petitioner stated that these were low-glare, no-glare type solar panels being used, was one main point I think he wanted to make.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is with the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. Okay. Slying for, go ahead.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that through the project's supplement and the testimony of their witnesses, the developer has and the testimony of their witnesses, the developer has not offered any Lee County ordinance screening options to the owner of any residence or to a platted subdivision. However, there was evidence that in the vicinity of the project parcel, there is a platted subdivision immediately adjacent to the north of the project parcel, but its nearest boundary line to the border development area is at least nine hundred and fifty feet distance- distant, and there are seven other nonparticipating residences immediately adjacent to the north, east, and south-southeast of the project parcel, and the distances from each of them to the border of the development area are, two of them to the north, at least nine hundred and fifty feet, and three of them to the west-northwest, over one thousand feet, and one to the west-southwest, at at least two thousand two hundred feet, and one abutting the development area.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. Vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion's adopted. And we can keep going.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that the Lee County ordinance requires screening options to any adjacent nonparticipating dwellings, including platted subdivisions, but the language of the screening section does not indicate whether the used adjective adjacent modifies the border of the project parcel or development area, and it became clear that at least to the subdivision and six of the seven residents, the developer interpreted adjacent relative to the development area, not to the project parcel.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. Vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion is adopted. Number next.
Mr. Chair, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that through both its supplement and the testimony of its agent, there will be no permanent storage within the development area, but will be temporary lay-down construction staging area immedi- immediately off the aforementioned access road, about four hundred and fifty feet from its junction with Maple's Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. And anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
All right. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion is adopted. If it's any help, you are now one- more than one-third of the way through. Would- and I bow to your wishes. Would you like to take breaks in thirds as we go through this? Or you want to try and get to half? I don't care. I don't know how goofy everybody's starting to feel, so.
You're almost halfway there now.
Page numbers.
Page numbers.
Okay. I'll keep going then. That's fine. I didn't hear a- I don't hear a chorus of let's- let's take a break, so, okay. Next.
Okay, Your Honor, my motion reads, Lee County ZBA finds that in its testimony, in its supplement and in the testimony produced, the developer has stated, if approved, the proposed construction activity would occur between the hours of seven-thirty a.m. and five p.m. on unspecified days of the week.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Meyer read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion is adopted. Okay. Next.
Okay, Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA further finds that through a combination of its supplemental material and the testimony it produced, actual construction will occur over a period of four to six months within support- with support pile driving during a three-week period, and the hope is to begin construction in early 2024.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote's by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Oops. Motion is carried. Okay. Your pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I move Lee County ZBA finds that according to the testimony and exhibits, after notices were sent by certified mail at least ten days prior to the Lee County ZBA, the Lee County Zoning and Planning Office, the Dixon Township Board, and entities owning real estate within a thousand feet of the nearest boundary point of the proposed projects, the developer hosted a joint community meeting for its proposed development on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, within the former courtroom on the third floor of the old Lee County Courthouse in Dixon from five p.m. till eight p.m., at which about twenty attendees appeared and were presented with the site plan and the envisioned development schedule and the decommissioning proposal, and a previous version of a landscaping plan, and an informational handout, and there was a discussion about screening.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion soably read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote's by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. That one wears the crown. Okay. Keep going.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has submitted in their supplemental materials a bound compendium of various documents and site-use permit set, which contains an aerial view, existing conditions plan, existing soils map, grading and erosion plan, petitioner exhibit number A, an updated landscaping plan, and petitioner exhibit number B, which together adequately shows the property lines and properties adjacent to the project parcel, their owners and the current uses thereof, shows the existing public roads, shows the project site topography contour map showing intervals of what appears to be at or very near two feet, and shows waterways, streams, and rivers or lack thereof, includes a FEMA National Flood Hazard Layer Permit Map of the subject property, shows map soils, which does not contain a key, but such can be referenced on page sixteen of zoning officer exhibit number eight, the Lee County Soil-Water Conservation District's March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three National Resources Information Report, shows the type and percentage of coverage of existing vegetation, and shows a map of water, surface water drainage pattern, or existing subsurface drainage lines, but it witness did testify that the contours shown on the existing conditions plan were intended to fulfill that ordinance requirement. Do not show drainage tiles, as the developer has not done a drainage tile survey, and do not show any pipelines, but its witness did testify a title search did not show any- show the existence of any pipeline utility easements, and shows the existence of a utility line running east-west across the project parcel, which the developer's witness agreed was marked on the large existing conditions plan as a utility easement.
May I go back up? I just didn't hear- I was trying to keep up and I didn't. When- when shows or did not show the type and percentage coverage of existing vegetation, I just didn't.
Shows.
Okay. Sorry, I just couldn't keep up. All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. That one is in the W column, and here we go.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has submitted what could be fairly characterized as an SES plan in its supplemental- in its supplement, including large schematics entitled site-use permit set, and to some degree, is testimony that adequately shows the planned location and spacing of the proposed solar panels and adequately shows the planned location of one access road, and adequately shows the planned location height and material of the perimeter fence, and shows the planned interconnection that would directly tie into the ComEd electrical- electric distribution grid, and adequately shows the proposed development's planned new electrical equipment and contains an updated landscape plan, petitioner exhibit number A, which appears to adequately incorporate native grasses, flowers, and plants, but does not contain a written weed grass control plan, even though the supplement reads that one has been detailed in the plans, but the developer's witness did testify that Maple Solar would be engaging the services of an independent contractor to control growth along the perimeter fence line.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss, about your motion? Hearing none.
There was not a written plan, but the key did read that they intended to maintain it a few times a year, three times in the first, two times there and after.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion is adopted. I think we can go forward. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on point forty-one, the Lee County- I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has not submitted standard manufacturer specifications for any of the SES equipment as required by the Lee County ordinance, but has, as required by the ordinance, promised to provide specifications for the actual equipment to be used in the SES before a building permit is issued.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the re- motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion's adopted. How about it?
My motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that through its supplemental material and the testimony of their agent, the petitioner explained that the point of the interconnection would be tied into the ComEd local distribution grid on its existing overhead electrical service running east-west across the project parcel at an exact point to be determined by ComEd.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. We can go ahead.
The Lee County- Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that included in the developer's supplemental was the result of the FFA Notice Criteria Tool, which indicated that the proposed development did not exceed notice criteria, and in his testimony, the petitioner's agent said that the FFA Notice Criteria Tool was run on- in February two thousand twenty-three. The nearest airport to the project site is Dixon Municipal Airport, located two-point-three miles distant. He did not know the distance from any private airstrip, and he was unaware of the project site being underneath any air traffic approach path.
Think you got FFA on your brain, but would you agree it says FAA?
Yep.
They pay cash. They pay cash for winning- winning entries, though. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Ms. Huss?
My apologies, sir.
That's the worst thing that happens today. It's a good, damn good day. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as- as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. Vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion's adopted. Who's next, Tab?
Mr. Chair, on the next point, I move Lee County ZBA finds that based on its supplemental material, the petitioner submitted a formal emergency response and communication plan, which covers the topics of internal reporting and external reporting, personal injury and medical emergency, and auto and heavy equipment accidents and fire, and hazardous material spills, and site restoration, restoration, and remediation, and incident reporting, safety training. Committed shortly after commercial operations had begun to have a contractor meet with local emergency service personnel, fire, police, and EMS to review and discuss the operation and decommissioning process, including unique equipment, as well as schedule and phasing. Any hazardous materials that may be present during each phase will be discussed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. The motion is adopted. Thank you very much. All right.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that the developer, as shown in its supplement and through its produced testimony, initiated a review consultation with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources through the department's ECO-CAP program, which results indicated no record of any state-listed threatened or endangered species, Illinois natural area inventory sites, dedicated Illinois nature preserves, or registered land and water reserves in the vicinity of the development location, and consequently, the consultation was terminated by a communication from the IDNR on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and produced a negative wetland findings report prepared by the Greenberg Pharaoh, an integrated professional services firm, which concluded that after preliminary site evaluations was- was performed using natural resource mapping, and then an onsite investigation by NCAP Incorporated, no wetlands or other waters of the U.S. were identified within or adjacent to the project area, and did not produce an Illinois State Historic Preservation Office HARGAS survey, but claimed one had been performed, which failed to show any cultural or architectural assets, and such conclusion is supported by the LCSWCD Natural Resources Information Report, which related that no cultural resources were identified from office maps.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Onward and upward.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that the zoning and planning administrator, Ms. D. Duffy, submitted a valid LCSWCD Natural Resources Information Report, which expressed an opinion that approximately forty-eight-point-four percent of the parcel is comprised of prime farmland soils, and indicated that there are no wetlands on the parcel, and the area is of minimal flood hazard, and indicated that zero percent of the parcel contained hydrox soils, and recommended a drained drainage tile survey, and the planting of native prairie mix between panels and within the buffer, and completed AMA. within the buffer, and completed AMA.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Any thing you want to say about your own motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is adopted, and?
Mr. Chair, at this point?
Yes, sir.
I would like to defer to the comment by our chairman about being half done and possibly taking a break.
That's fine with me. How about 25 after?
I don't have the authority to make this decision.
It's okay.
Are you ready?
Yabba dabba doo.
Mr. Chair, I move on point forty-seven. The Lee County ZBA finds that the developer's witnesses testified the Maples Road Solar One LLC would comply with all the above Lee County Soil/Water Conservation District's recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is whether or not, whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the developer's witness testified that Maples Road Solar One LLC would comply with all of the above LCSWCD's recommendations. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted. And we can keep going. For your pleasure.
My motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that despite the whole of the project parcel being classified as prime farmland by LCSWCD's National Resource Information Report, the developer's witness contended that due to twenty-three acres of the development's thirty-five acres having a slope between five and twelve percent, the development area would not be considered prime farmland.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Anybody else? Any board member, I mean? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. And we can go onward and upward.
Your Honor, I move that regardless, the Lee County ZBA finds that between the petitioner's supplement and the testimony it produced as to topsoil, the petitioner asserted that there would be no topsoil removed, stripped, or sold from the proposed project site, as there was no need for any development area grading, and the topsoil removed from the construction of the planned access road would be relocated at the pleasure of the project parcel lease or. The developer promised to use all good engineering practices to minimize disturbance to the leasehold area, and the developer committed to establishing vegetative ground covering using native plant seed mix and reliably maintaining the same while minimizing environmental risks.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. Vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Alrighty.
Mr. Chair, on point fifty, lastly, I move that lastly, the Lee County ZBA notes that the remaining issues of stormwater management within the proposed project are addressed in the ordinance by mandating that the developers submit a stormwater management plan to the Lee County engineer and obtain a drainage permit before a building permit is issued.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it? Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. Vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Adopted.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that in its supplement and through its testimony it produced, the developer believed its ordinance-driven obligation was to enter into an AMA prior to obtaining a building permit.
Second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that the developer did not commit to contact local drainage districts before construction to locate drainage district tiles, but did instead commit to engaging the services of an independent contractor to perform a drainage tile survey prior to beginning construction.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question on what, on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Excuse me. The motion is adopted. Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I move on point fifty-three, that the Lee County ZBA finds that through the testimony they produced, the petitioner promised if any drainage tiles were found to be damaged during construction or operation of the proposed SES to repair the same as soon as possible.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, this is just quoting what he said. I mean, this-
I talked on the top, yeah, sorry. Go ahead. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That one is adopted as well. Yes.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner did not produce a communication interference analysis, but did through its testimony, it produced aver that there would be no such interference because past tests, peer-reviewed academic studies have shown there's no communication issues caused by solar panels or solar systems. And if there were to be any such interference, the petitioner committed in the testimony it produced to comply with the Lee County ordinance requirements to respond and mitigate.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything, Mr., you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that in their supplemental material, Maple Road, Maple Solar made no mention of the use of water to clean the solar panel surfaces, but its agent testified that there would be no regularly scheduled solar panel washing, but if the panels were cleaned, it would probably be done with water, but he did not know the amount of water that would be used.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Ms. Huss? Any, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. Okay?
Mr. Chair, on point fifty-six, I move Lee County ZBA finds that in the testimony it produced, Maple Road Solar's witness indicated that any solid waste generated by construction or operation of the proposed SES would be taken off-site and disposed in accordance with all applicable state, federal, local rules and regulations.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted as well. It's up to you folks.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the ZBA cannot find that based on testimony heard there would be no batteries associated with the proposed project.
Can I, so, the Lee County ZBA cannot find that based on testimony heard there would be no batteries associated with the proposed project?
That's right.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
Just that I remember him talking about batteries on the first day of testimony.
Any other comment?
I'll make the comment. When he came in on the second night, he did say that there would be no batteries.
Any other board member?
Yes, he attested that there would be and they would remove any part of the petition pertaining to battery storage.
Okay, so I have a pending motion. Any other comments? I do have a second. So I'm calling a vote for what, on the motion as proposed by Mr. Meyer, and I'm going to read the motion. It's proposed that the Lee County ZBA cannot find that based on the testimony heard there would be no batteries associated with the proposed project. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Mr. Meyer has to vote for his motion, so that's one. All right, all those opposed by nay?
Nay.
Do I hear another motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that Lee County ZBA finds that based on testimony heard there would be no batteries associated with the proposed project.
I'm gonna do this. Okay. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
I don't keep track of motions that are not adopted, so I'm not- All right. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, I think we've discussed it, no?
Any, any other board member? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that based on testimony heard there would be no batteries associated with the proposed project. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion, that motion is adopted. Next.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that any decommissioning provisions are under the operative ordinance now a function of the executed AMA and the insurance of a building permit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing that, I'll put the question, uh, excuse me. Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss, about that motion? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted. All right, next.
Mr. Chair, I move on point fifty-nine, that Lee County ZBA finds that if the petition is granted, the petitioner committed through the testimony of their agent to maintain insurance as required by the Lee County ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read and continually displayed here in the courtroom and on Zoom. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? All right. Next.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that there was evidence, that there was evidence that for the whole project parcel, the composite lease score is one ninety-eight comprised of a land evaluation of eighty-three and a site assessment of one fifteen, and the productivity index is one twenty-four, making the whole tract Class B land.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, the applicant testified that the PI was one twenty-four. It's in the transcript.
Okay. So do you want to change your motion real quick to one twenty-four?
Yeah, I read it as one twenty-four.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let me mark that as correction. All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, do you, anything you want to say, other, other, else you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put and adopt, is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer and now corrected on the screen. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that there was sufficient evidence from the testimony and supplementary, supplementary material to show this proposed project is compatible with the Lee County Comprehensive Plan, which is to be used as a decision-making tool and a measure to implement overall goals, objectives, and policies for Lee County.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing, the second, anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted. And we can keep going forward.
Mr. Chair, on point sixty-two, I move Lee County ZBA finds that based on the supplementary material and any testimony heard, other than probably truck traffic and a three-week support pile driving during construction, there would be no detectable vibration associated with this proposed development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption, that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's adopted. Oops. Okie dokie.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA, based on the supplement and testimony heard, that there would be no material or substance emitted from the proposed solar development.
Did you say finds?
Finds.
Yep. Do I hear a second?
Sir.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption, that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? All right. Next.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that based on the supplementary material and testimony heard, there would be no odor associated with this proposed solar development.
Do I hear a second to that? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Anything you want to say about your motion, Ms. Huss?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as just read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? There you go. Whoops. Okay, next.
Mr. Chair, I move on point sixty-five, that Lee County ZBA finds that based on the testimony heard, there was no study conducted to determine what if any electromagnetic fields would be created by this proposed project, but the project developer's witness testified that there would be very minimal electromagnetic fields generated by the operation of this project at about three feet surrounding the inverter, similar to the amount you get from an appliance in your house.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted, and we can go on.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that based on the petitioner's supplement and its testimony heard, there would be insignificant heat associated with this solar development that would affect adjoining properties.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Got it? Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board members? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Ms. Huss just read. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted. The next.
Point sixty-seven. I move Lee County ZBA finds that based on the supplementary, supplementary material and testimony heard, there would be no particularly identifiable fire or explosive explosion hazards associated with this proposed solar development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it? Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted. Your pleasure. Back to you.
My motion reads, Lee County ZBA finds that based on testimony heard, other than human waste generated during the construction phase, there would be no particular identifiable toxic or nash's materials generated by this solar development, and the developer indicated the aforementioned human waste would be handled by porta potties.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it? Any, anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. And we can go forward.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that the character of the land within the leasehold area is presently agricultural row crop with no permanent structures present.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it? Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? And that motion is adopted.
Mr. Chair, I move on point seventy, that Lee County ZBA finds that the developer's witness testified that from the tests we have on other sites and of other research, a community solar project does not affect any neighboring property values, and that the tests and research to which he was apparently referring were performed by Cone Resnick throughout a few years, and a couple were done in just the last month.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it? Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board members? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion by Mr. Burrow, read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. And you're two-thirds of the way through the number of motions.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that there was very little evidence produced showing that the proposed development would have no effect on nearby property values.
That look correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear two. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as, as read by Mr. Meyer. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. I think. There we go. Okay.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County Zoning Board finds that the petitioner related in their supplementary materials and through the testimony of their agent that during the four- to six-month construction period, there would be a mix of semis, flatbed, dump, and delivery-type trucks averaging two to three daily, and approximately thirty to forty personnel workers' vehicles driving, arriving each day, and as to parking those vehicles, the developer hopes to use the temporary lay-down yard, a one hundred and fifty feet by one hundred and fifty feet shown on the layout and materials plan for the expected delivery trucks, and as to the workers' personal trucks, to also use the same temporary lay-down area, but may they, maybe they would park along Maples Road. Consequently, the petitioner committed to entering into a road use agreement in compliance with the Lee County ordinance, and that after the construction is complete, there would be a minimal increase to traffic to and from the proposed project site.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. Okay.
Mr. Chair, on point seventy-three, I move Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner's agent testified that the projects would each produce approximately thirty-one thousand dollars of annual real estate property tax.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing that, anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is whether or not the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner's agent testified that the projects, the projet- That's just a Scrivener's error. Would, would produce approximately thirty-one thousand dollars of real estate property tax. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted. And what do you think next, lady gentlemen?
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County ZBA finds that the proposed project would enhance greater electric, electrical grid stability.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's ZBA finds that the proposed project would enhance greater electrical grid stability. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That one is adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA finds that the proposed project would contribute to the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions.
And do I hear a second to that one? Hearing that, anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's ZBA finds that the proposed project would contribute to the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted.
Mr. Chair, I move, Lee County's ZBA finds that the petitioner's agent testified that the development would not require any public services or utilities during construction or operation of the SES, but such ignores the road use and the possibility of emergency services.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is adopted. All righty.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County's ZBA finds that the participating land owner would financially benefit from the proposed project.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Excuse me. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion, that motion is adopted, and we can go on.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA finds that members of the ComEd customer-based community would have the opportunity to reduce their electrical costs somewhere between five to twenty percent by subscribing to this proposed community solar development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing it. Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss, adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The motion is adopted.
Yes, and it should be ten.
Yeah.
My apologies. It should be ten.
Should be what, ten, right?
Ten.
Yeah. Okay, that's what you read, I thought, maybe I'm -- maybe I'm starting to go in one ear and out the other. You agree that you read ten, or it should be ten?
It should be ten. Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA finds that the members of the ComEd customer-based community would have the opportunity to reduce their electrical costs somewhere between five and ten percent by subscribing to this proposed community solar development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Okay. There we go. Next.
Okay. Mr. Chair, on point seventy-nine, I move Lee County's ZBA finds that, while of course specific power generated would not be dedicated solely to local routing, the petitioner's witness testified that this proposed project, that the project would produce enough electricity to power over eight hundred average homes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Burrow, anything you want to say?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, adoption of the motion requires a vote by majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The motion is adopted. Next?
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County's ZBA finds that neither in its supplement nor in the testimony it produced did the applicants propose any direct community benefits it intended to provide.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing that, anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer, adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is also adopted. Yes?
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County zoning board finds that the approval of this proposed special use would not carry with it the need to access any traditional infrastructure utilities.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. Okay. Next.
Mr. Chair, I move, the Lee County's ZBA finds that filling the anticipated construction jobs with local labor will be at the discretion of the construction contractor and subcontractors, and the petitioner's agent testified that the compensation of those workers would be in conformity with the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act, and the petitioner promised to develop and maintain on-site a health and safety plan for the protection of all regarding personal injury, medical emergency, auto and heavy equipment injuries, fire, hazardous material spills, a log of responders' complaints.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is, all those against, nay. Motion's adopted. Oops.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County's ZBA finds that regardless of any possible economic benefits, its decision to recommend or to not recommend approval of the petition is not based on an increase or decrease in revenue for taxing bodies, but rather the criteria in the Lee County ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as just read by Mr. Meyer, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA finds that an agent for Maples Road Solar One LLC testified under oath or affirmation that the petitioner would be bound by any and all proposals, promises, statements, and representations in the supplementary material for a SUP or made under oath at the public hearing before the Lee County's ZBA, even if not expressly specified herein or therein, and that any successor and interest would be similarly bound as Maple Road Solar One LLC would make any sale subject to the terms and conditions of any special use granted to the project.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, do you want to say anything about your own motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read and essentially corrected by Ms. Huss, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, on point eighty-five, I move, Lee County's ZBA finds that an agent for Maples Road Solar One LLC testified under oath or affirmation that the petitioner would comply with all applicable industry standards, codes, and best practices, and local, state, and federal rules, regulations, and laws pertaining to electricity generation and transmission.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Hey, what do you say?
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County's ZBA finds that the petitioner has not, either in writing or orally, requested any variations from the provisions of the Lee County ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being proposed is whether the Lee County's ZBA finds that the petitioner has not, either in writing or orally, requested any variations from the provisions of the Lee County ordinance. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the votes by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is adopted. Yes?
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA finds that the Maples Road Solar One LLC proposed special uses would not have any significant effects on the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding properties.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss, adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? I find that motion carries, and we can go on.
Mr. Chair, on point eighty-eight, I move, Lee County's ZBA finds that the proposed special use would not impose any negative effects on public health, public safety, and/or general welfare.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, I will ask Mr. Burrow if you have any comment on your own motion?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion carries. And we can keep going.
Your Honor, my motion reads, the Lee County's ZBA finds that the proposed special use would not have a material effect on traffic conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Mr. Meyer, anything you want to say about your own motion?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. About it.
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA finds that the proposed special use would not have a significant effect on public utility facilities, but it might marginally improve the quality of electrical power in the local portion of the grid, and decrease the electricity cost to community subscribers.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss, adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted.
Mr. Chair, I move, the Lee County's ZBA finds that proposed SES projects do not carry with them any apparent environmental concerns.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's ZBA finds the proposed SES project does not carry with it any apparent environmental concerns. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is adopted. All right.
Your Honor, the Lee County's ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that the Maples Road Solar One LLC's petition for special use be approved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that Maples Road Solar One LLC's petition for special use be approved. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by roll. Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Huss?
Yes.
Motion is adopted. Coming around the clubhouse turn. Okay. Next?
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, the ordinance-driven requirement of an Illinois licensed engineer certificate regarding the foundation and subsequent review by a Lee County-appointed third-party engineer be required before the issuance of a building permit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board members? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and we can keep going on. Next?
Mr. Chair, I move on point ninety-four, Lee County's ZBA recommends the Lee County Board that petition for special use is allowed, a condition be that construction activities commence no earlier than seven a.m. and shall be discontinued no later than seven p.m. on Monday through Saturday, within a quarter-mile of a non-participating residence, unless a written waiver is obtained from said non-participating resident.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to take a look as soon as I hack away here.
Monday through Saturday.
Oops.
Quarter-mile.
Does that look right, Mr. Burrow?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
Just trying to recall what we have done on the previous ones. If anybody has any other thoughts, it'd be fine.
Okay, any other board member, comment? Hearing none, seeing none, I
Yeah, I do. Your Honor, given the testimony given by the witness and the testimony given by the interested parties, I recommend that the construction time not commence any earlier than seven-thirty a.m. and be discontinued no later than five p.m.
Okay, that is a, I mean, you, obviously, you're
It's my discussion.
Right to make a comment. Any other board member? All right. I'm going to put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County's ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, a condition be that construction activities commence no earlier than seven a.m. and shall be discontinued no later than seven p.m. on Monday through Saturday, within one-quarter-mile of a non-participating residence, unless written waiver is obtained from said non-participating residence. Adoption of this motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The nays have it, or the opposed have it, motion is defeated. Someone like to propose another one?
Your Honor, I move that the Lee County's ZBA recommends to the Lee County's Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, a condition be that the construction activities shall commence no earlier than seven-thirty a.m. and shall be discontinued no later than five p.m. on Monday through Saturday, within a quarter-mile of non-participating residence, unless a written waiver is obtained from said non-participating residence.
Take a look, make sure you got it right, I think I do, but... All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second? Anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member?
I would just like to reiterate, that's what the, um, petitioner asked or stated they would do.
Any other, any other comments? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Ms. Huss, now, now displayed on the board here in the courtroom and on Zoom, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? This motion is adopted. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen?
Hey, uh, my motion reads, "The Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use are allowed, the petitioners be required to provide the Lee County Zoning and Planning Office with evidence of having done a drain tile survey before a building permit is issued."
Second?
Second.
Got it. Any, um, anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted. Okay.
Your honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, that, and it is found that any subsurface drainage tile is damaged within the proposed site, such damage is repaired to the same or better in compliance with the then existing AMA.
Do I hear a second?
No later than one month.
Oops, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Second.
I'll put a dash there. Got a second, all right? Anything you want to say about your mo-, well, first of all, Ms. Huss, does that look right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything you want to say about your own motion?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss, displayed here in the courtroom and on Zoom, adoption of that motion be, um, requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The motion is adopted. Next.
I move on point 97, the Lee County ZBA recommends, Lee County Board, that if the petition for special use is allowed, the word adjacent is used in the screening section of the applicable Lee County ordinance be interpreted to include the platted subdivision and all of the seven previously noted residences.
Second.
You got a second? Um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Uh, I, um... Any other board member? I'm sorry, I got lost where I was going. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted.
Your honor, I move, "The Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use are allowed, the petitioner be required to provide to the Lee County Zoning and Planning Office with evidence before building permit is issued that they have contacted the owner of any defined adjacent non-participating dwelling to explain to them their ordinance-driven screening options and have either reached a memorandum of understanding with those owners for a screen or have made the required one-time payment to them."
Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
Nope.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer, adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted.
Your honor, I move that the Lee County Zoning Board recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, the petition to be required to provide the Lee County Zoning and Planning Office with a written landscape plan that includes a weed and grass control plan before the issuance of a building permit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say about your motion, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any, uh, other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Ms. Huss, adoption requires the vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted.
Mr. Chair, I move on point 100, that the Lee County ZBA recommends, Lee County Board, that if the petition for special use is allowed, given the conflict in ordinance section, sections, producing an executed AMA before construction is the most equitable and therefore should require an executed AMA prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Um, hearing, yeah, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion I find to have carried and adopted. All right.
Your honor, my motion reads, "The Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, that a condition of the permit be that no employee, agent, contractor, or vendor of the developer use the DPG Trust Parcels driveway for a turnaround."
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say, Mr. Meyer?
Nope, I think that's self-explanatory.
Uh, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Meyer, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is adopted. Yes?
Your honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, that a condition of the permit be that no employee, agent, contractor, or vendor of the developer park any vehicles on Maple Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second? Um, uh, anything you want to say, Ms. Huss?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by, um, Ms. Huss, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion carries, the ayes have it. Oops. Next.
Mr. Chair, on point 103, I move, Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, the petitioner will be required to maintain and publish a telephone or web-based contact portable, portal for members of the public request solution of issues regarding the project, and the petitioner maintain a log of those contacts, the subsequent results thereof.
Second.
Got a second? Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
Uh, no, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote, uh, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is adopted.
Your honor, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that thereafter your ZBA considered its findings and of fact and recommendations over the course of one session on May 11th, 2023, lasting about two and one-half hours.
Second.
Got a second? Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Meyer?
Nope.
And any other board member? Want to address it? Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Meyer read, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Do I hear any other motions? Speak now, or... Not forever hold your peace, but at least on this. All right. Uh, I turn the meeting. Mr. Forrester, back to you.
And I think the only portion of business we have is to continue the meeting until after the county board meeting.
On May 25th.
On May 25th. Okay?
When's our next hearing?
And when is our next hearing?